All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this June 11th, 2024 meeting of the City of Dunwoody Planning Commission to Order. It's approximately approximately 6:00 PM. I'd like to go ahead and start the top of the order with a roll call if we would please, starting from my far right, please.
Scott Brown.
Elizabeth Shin.
Deb Cameron.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Hopefully, we'll have more company joining us along the way, but we're going to go ahead and get underway. The first order of the day is to address two sets of minutes, one of which I believe was sent back at the prior meeting for some revisions for correction. Commission, what's your pleasure on the December 12th minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
All right. Commissioner Cameron's moved to approve them as written. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Brown, seconds. We've got a motion and a second at this time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Second order of business is the approval of February 13th, 2024 Planning Commission minutes. Once again, Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve the February 13th Planning Commission minutes as written.
All right. Commissioner Shin has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Brown, seconds. Hearing a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of passing the motion as recited. Raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Once again, that passes unanimously. All right, we're going to go ahead and like to go ahead and ask for a motion from the commission because we would like to, respect a folks' time. I believe we've got a couple items here that if we reshuffled them, we'd be able to hear people's voices, but also not necessarily keep them here for some training that we've got going this evening. So at this time, may I please have a motion to move the annual training later in the agenda to this evening?
I move that we move the annual training to after new business in the agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion to move the annual training to after new business in the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the same? Seeing none, all in all in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Once again, that carries unanimously. So what we're going to go ahead and do is move the annual training to later in the meeting. And at this time, I would go ahead and invite Paul Leonhardt to please come forward for some organizational procedural items, remarks.
But to give an update of what happened since the last meeting, I think that you were even possible. Oh, I apologize. Thank you, sir. I hope you could hear me sort of hear me previously. A second master site plan for Emory Healthcare. That one, if you remember, that you made a recommendation to add nighttime conditions for one of the sign, the sign that points towards the residential neighborhood there. The city council appreciated that condition specifically. The applicant wrote up a a plan how to accomplish that. And the city council approved this with that change. And then lastly, the zoning for the park center, the the final phase, like building, building four, that you guys recommended approval for, that came to the city council and for a very large project with such a use configuration, it it really just sailed through. No one spoke against or for the development. And it passed the city council and we're waiting, should be approximately a year or so until we see permits on this one. And then last thing I want to mention, we're getting close towards starting the comprehensive planning process. Comprehensive plans in Georgia have to be renewed every five years and show the overall development goals for the city. We have bundled this with a complete update to our zoning ordinance, our sign code, our land development regulation, everything that is construction related. And we'll bundle this into a UDO, Unified Development Ordinance. So we'll do a real comprehensive rewrite of our code that stems back to the 1960s, the CAP County Code. We hired a consultant to lead that for us and we'll kick that that project off this month. And then there will be, of course, opportunity for for you all in the planning commission to opine on on that process. And then we would certainly invite you all to any sort of public meetings or any sort of outreach that we're doing to be part of that. And if you all have any questions about any of these cases, please just let me know now.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we're going to see if there's any, are there any other organizational procedural items at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, and any unfinished business at this time? All right, hearing none, we will then proceed, please, to new business. That's an ordinance to define community residences and recovery communities and create use regulations for such uses, Chapter 27. Paul, take it away.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commission. Good evening. This is this is a return. This is the text amendment that started out as text amendment for for drug abuse facilities specifically that broadened a little bit, where we brought mental health and we brought larger disability issues in there as well. And it's now a text amendment for community residents and recovery communities. I want to do a quick summary of why we're bringing this up. We have a gap in the zoning ordinance that has been pointed out to us. We have drug abuse treatment facilities referenced in the code, so it's anticipated in the code that it exists as a use category. We do not have them included in the use table, so under the current, under the current zoning ordinance, there is no pathway for these types of facilities, which we think is an oversight that leaves us legally vulnerable. To close that gap, proposing regulations now to your DF, they've changed a little bit over over the months. But we have those regulations today that balance the access to treatment citywide, but that do not overwhelm the city's neighborhoods. So we're trying to propose to you all sort of a balanced approach on this that is different from what you all have heard a year ago and it's different from what you all have heard six months ago. And we hope that this is something that can pass the city council as well. As part of this, we bundled this. There was in May of this year, the governor signed a law that that changes the procedural requirements for these types of facilities. We're proposing to incorporate this as part of this text amendments as sort of a housekeeping item as well. What it is in our code is like that we have drug rehabilitation centers and other facilities for treatment of drug dependency referenced in the code, and those come directly from state law. And we have them pointed out in the special land use permit code sections and in the rezoning code sections. And all it says in there is that if there are any procedural procedure, procedural sections that require public hearing, that has to be pushed out further. So there needs to be a public hearing held at least six months before a decision is made, which is unusual. Like you know that a planning commission holds a public hearing, city council holds a public hearing, but they're typically spaced much closer to facilitate the approval process. So it was the only land use that we had in the code that had these increased requirements. And again, this was based on state law. That has recently changed, and I'll have a slide specifically about that. The city council like noticed the issue as well, and they had when we notified they issued a moratorium on these facilities, that moratorium is still in place. It has been extended twice and it currently runs to August 13th. And we're trying to sort of get the moratorium resolved and get a pathway for these types of facilities in the books. And then sort of the the legal or like the substantive background, people with substance use disorder issues with addiction issues, if they're undergoing a supervised rehabilitation program, are seen as a protected class under fair housing laws. So this is the same protected class that someone falls under who has mental health issues. That's the same protected class that someone falls under with physical disabilities. So all these people are seen as handicapped and have protections under federal law. Our current ordinance does not address this. And and this is sort of like a relatively recent legal development. You know, there's ever changing case law on this to where people with substance addiction issues were generally not seen to be in the same category 20, 30 years ago. But but the the direction of of the law points us in 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 this direction. Current ordinance provides different rules for different people who fall under these categories. So we have specific regulations for personal care homes, which is a state licensed group for supportive living, for community living arrangements. That is so different groups of people with disabilities. We have different rules for them, even though from a legal, from a legal perspective and from a functional perspective, if we're saying that all of those people are the same protected class, the the better way to approach it is to have similar regulations, which we're doing as part of this text amendment as well. What we're differentiating here is to have two groups of facilities or group homes depending on scale and on land use impacts. We have a small scale form of this, the community residence. This is more in nature like a house or like a home. People live in a household and receive support for their for their daily tasks. We have a larger category as well, which is the recovery community. So there is typically more treatment provided or more support provided, potentially more specialized support provided. And it functions more like a multifamily, more like a nursing home. We have different rooms for different people. It's not, it's not supposed to be a household. The community residence really is supposed to function as a household, similar to a home. The recovery community is not intending to do that. And for that, we have different down there, the the table at the bottom of this of this page, you see, we have, we have them grouped based on the land use impacts that come with this. Where community residence is with a special land use permit allowed in single dwelling residential districts because that's what it is supposed to be modeled after. This is similar to how we have it currently with personal care homes. The recovery community, because it is more a nursing home, more in the direction of multi-unit living, is not permitted in single family districts. In multifamily districts and commercial districts and the perimeter districts, both uses are allowed as a permitted use. In the Dunwoody Village districts, they're allowed as a special land use permit. And then we're proposing to regulate this, a bunch of use standards and how we regarded those instead of over time, you know, we had, we had this ordinance before you all twice already. And the city council declined to take it up either time because we didn't find the right balance on some of this. What we're trying to do is is doing a pathway for these facilities, the small and the larger ones, but finding a balance where they fit into our communities, allowing for input, allowing for negotiation with the neighborhoods, with the planning commission, with the city council in the most part. And I'll walk you through the different, the different routes kind of how we're trying to get there. First, proposing a spacing requirement. This is a 7,500 feet from other community residences and recovery communities. So places cannot cluster. They have to be spaced apart by the distance provided provided here. What this does is it prevents individual neighborhoods from becoming overburdened, like it spreads it out amongst the different parts of the communities. And in the neighborhoods especially, it maintains the residential character of those. This is both with an eye towards existing neighborhoods, but also towards the treatment. Because research has shown us that treatment functions better if people are integrated. And this prevents like through the back door, the creation of a social service district or like a institutional district. This is not to say that places cannot be within seven and a half thousand feet. They can. They have to obtain a special land use permit in that case. And the special land use permit comes with specific requirements that address those considerations, you know, the the impact on on the existing neighborhoods and the impact on other facilities. This map, that's part of your package, and it's probably a bit easier to see when you had pulled it up at home to look at it. But it shows the existing facilities that we have in the cities. It's those little, those little dots on there. And the outline is of the parcels there on. You can see those circular shapes around there. That shows the 7,500 foot buffer around each facility. You can see that in some parts of You can see that in some parts of the city, we have multiple facilities already. But any existing facility can continue to operate because we consider them legally non-conforming. This is just in, in any parts of the shaded area that's within the circles. Any additional facility would first have to obtain a special land use permit. Proposing a second, a second distance requirement and this one from parks and schools. And that gets at some of the same concerns that residents may have if a community residence or recovery community comes to town. So we're proposing a thousand foot distance requirement from parks and from primary and secondary schools. This addresses safety concerns that exist in parts of the community and that's, yeah, that, that we are taking serious and then potentially reduces the impact on public resources. And I'll give an example that, that the most common complaint that we have is that people are smoking in close proximity, that people tend to pick up smoking and then have smoke in close proximity to where they live. And this provides a little bit of spacing sort of around those community facilities. Again, this is not to say that a facility cannot open within that area. It's that they have to obtain a special land use permit if they need to go into a location that is in an area like that. And then we have specific requirements, a special land use permit requirement, requirements that have to be met to facilitate that. Same, I have a map here that shows in green shows the parks in the city. And then the little dots that are surrounded by the blue circles, that is our schools. So it shows the thousand foot buffer around those types of facilities. And then we have a, a, a overall map in your package. This is here overlaid, overlaid on the zoning map of the city of Dunwoody. It shows both the existing facilities and the seven thousand five hundred buffer. And it shows the schools and parks and the associated one thousand foot buffer. And the areas that are impacted by those buffers, that if anything outside of those areas does not need to obtain a special land use permit, anything inside those areas needs to obtain a special land use permit. Another requirement that we're, that we're having is that we, we ask for operations plan to be submitted as part of this. This is partially in, in some states. There are very prescriptive state requirements for these types of facilities. Let's say for a sober home or for, for, for facilities of that, of that nature. Georgia has some use categories too that fall into this realm where there's a state requirement. Then there are also nonprofit type licensing options. But other facilities that fall into this group, there is no such, there's no state requirement. So what we're asking people to submit is operations plan that shows the staffing and the types of treatment that are provided at the facility. Of course, if it requires a special land use permit, then this would come to you all as well and would come to the city council as well. We're also asking for a transition plan that is in place. We're not asking for individual people, how they are transitioned. Because that's between them and the facility, but we're asking that the facility create a transition plan, how these things are typically handled, both in cases where the treatment is considered successful and people are graduating out of these facilities. But also in cases where the money runs out or, or it, it is just not successful. We're including a requirement here regarding certain caps on, on the number of residents for community residences. We're limiting this to five residents through the slot process. Of course, like if you have four unrelated residents are allowed by right currently in, in any home and any dwelling unit, which includes apartments and it includes freestanding houses. So currently by law, we're allowing four unrelated residents. The same is true for these facilities because they're considered homes like, like other homes. So they can do four unrelated residents by right. They can do, if they're a community residence and they go through the community residence category, they can do up to five residents. And then if they, if they require, they want to accommodate more residents, then we ask for a special land use permit for that as well. Which is again, similar to the, the, the personal care home that you all had seen. And that is because then there's the additional impact compared to a, a typical home. Recovery communities because they're more similar to a nursing home, more similar to a apartment building. They do not have occupancy limits, so they're limited by the dimensional standards in the district. And then again, like we're, we're tackling sort of concerns that we see in the community. When not allowing sex offenders to be part of, of the residents in these facilities. And no people who are on parole or probation have to recite it specific at a specific address. What this is, is what's considered like a halfway house typically. So this is not a place where people go after they've been part of the, the legal justice system. This is not a place where people go after their prison stay. This is for handicap residents who need support. We have these other categories covered as well in the code and other categories, but, but this is not it. This is specifically for disabled residents. And then we have a, a second item here, we, we heard of the fear that existing apartment communities may transition over time. You know, either building by building, floor by floor, unit by unit. And we have a condition in there as well that this cannot happen. So recovery communities need to be on their own parcel and need to be sort of a freestanding use. They can't go into apartment communities and then occupy one, one of the buildings or one of the floors. And then again, what we're adding with this as, as a housekeeping item is response to state law that was passed on May sixth, House Bill ten seventy-three, that had these additional hearing requirements that I mentioned earlier, the, the six month waiting period for these facilities. The state law has, has removed that requirement wholesale. And we're proposing to do the same thing to bring us in alignment with state law. We don't have it for any other use categories. It's specifically only for sort of drug rehabilitation facilities. And this would treat these types of facilities similar to any other land uses in the city. And again, this is not a reduction of input if something needs a special land use permit, if something needs a rezoning. That would still have two public hearings plus a community meeting. It's just the spacing requirement is removed. And then I, I want to wrap it up. Then again, acknowledging that we're before you a third time now with slightly different regulations. We are confident that we have something now that, that can pass the city council in, in, in a form what we had previously proposed, did not, you know, was not something that was possible. We're providing, providing a pathway here for small and large facilities, while preventing clustering and maintaining protections. We're also maintaining room for community input because the majority of users would have to require a special land use permit. There would be room for people to be notified, there would be room for people to provide inputs and contribute to the design and we hope that leads to, that leads to better projects than, than would be otherwise. At the same time, we are providing a pathway for these facilities, both large in many districts as a permitted use and small up to into the residential districts. So we think we're striking a balance here with this code that potentially makes no site fully happy, but is hopefully something that is a compromised solution. From an administrative standpoint, by simplifying the code by consolidating several group home categories into the community residence category. To treat same, the same, you know, combine all these groups that have the same protections under one category. And then there will be more input for this. So there's another public hearing planned or would be if it follows. If you all submit your recommendation today, we'll follow on July eighth at the city council meeting. And then there would be a second hearing for the implementation. We hope the city council takes it up, takes it up this time. And then for this, like I, I want to wrap it up with, I received one item of public comments that we've emailed you all and the gentleman, Mr. Wittenstein is just here kind of to address you all himself as well. And with this, I want to conclude my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and postpone questions and discussion until after we hear from those for and against. So at this time. Thank you. At this time, we would invite those that are, are for this. We have 10 minutes. If you are a proponent of this, please feel free to come forward and be mindful that if there are other people to speak, you're sharing that 10 minutes with others. Any proponents at this point? All right, seeing and hearing none, it looks like I've got a, a couple of those in opposition. So at this point, I'll go ahead and invite Robert Wittenstein to come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Wittenstein. I live at eleven forty-six Bordeaux Court in Dunwoody. A, a community is judged by the way in which they treat the most vulnerable among them. And I'm afraid that with these changes, we are demonstrating that we failed that challenge. And that we are making it unreasonably difficult for Dunwoody residents and other community members to get the care and the help that they need in our city. We're sending a message to, to send people elsewhere. And that's not what Dunwoody ought to be about. There are three specific changes I would encourage you to make. The first is the community residences, which is the small scaled single family home category. I would encourage you, rather than require a special land use permit for that, I would encourage you to waive that or to make that an administrative permit. The reason is this, we, as you saw on your map, there are a whole bunch of these things that operate in Dunwoody and they all operate without a single problem. None of these places create any issues for the neighbors. And unless you know it's there, you would never know it's there. And yet, when a new one makes an application, suddenly the city is filled with FUD. You know what FUD is? Fear, uncertainty and doubt. It becomes a political issue that, oh my God, something's going to change. We may not like it. We don't know these people. What's going to happen? And it becomes an issue that is blown out of proportion by people who are afraid of FUD. It's much better to allow these organizations to exist and then to task the city with policing them appropriately if they are guilty of code violations. So I would encourage you first to take the small scaled residential communities out of the special land use permit process. The second thing I would encourage you to do is to take out the requirement that these places be at more than a thousand feet away from any park. For goodness sakes, we would hate for people who are struggling to have access to green space. Oh my gosh, what's going to happen if people who are struggling in their lives could get to a park? What a terrible thing might happen. I'm also concerned specifically that there is a piece of property that is strategically located a thousand feet, less than a thousand feet from Brook Run. And this is designed to specifically prohibit that facility from opening. There is a long-term care facility at the corner of Tilly Mill and North Peachtree, which has been vacant since it was closed during COVID. And there is a current proposal to create a facility there and it's half a block from Brook Run. And boy, if I were those people, I would sue the city for trying to prevent this in a means other than straightforward. I think it's, it's disheartening to say that people who are struggling or who are, uh, need assistance shouldn't have access to our city parks. And if smoking is not allowed in city parks, then smoking isn't allowed in city parks. And we can enforce that. But to say that, that, that people who are struggling in their lives can't get access to any of our green spaces because we forbid it, strikes me as incredibly mean spirited. The last change I would encourage you to make is again to the community residences portion. With these changes, we are changing the number of people who are allowed in one of these homes from seven down to five. The problem with this is the ratio of, of residents to caregivers. For these places to be economically feasible, you have to be able to share the cost of the caregiver across more than four residences. Right? So the caregiver counts as a person. If you got to have a caregiver round the clock, what you're now saying is that the cost of that caregiver can only be shared among four people rather than among six people. And that makes it economically almost infeasible to have these places in Dunwoody. There are places today in Dunwoody that have seven residents or, or six residents and a caregiver. And none of them create a problem for our city. None of them are, have too many cars, too much trash, too much noise. These places, these are, these are our friends and neighbors. And allowing them to continue to operate in our city is an obligation that we should feel very sacred about. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. The second card here, I'm having trouble reading the last name. The first name's Andrew. So please step forward, introduce yourself and share your address, please.
Hi, my name is Andrew Rucker. I live at four, five, nine, eight Barclay Drive. Thank you. I represent four of the seven treatment centers in the Dunwoody area currently. I represent two properties that are proposed treatment centers in Dunwoody. The one at Tilly Mill and North Peachtree and the old Phoenix assisted living program off of North Schalfer. We have never had a problem with the city. We've been here since twenty sixteen. And this came about because somebody from outside the city came in and said, hey, we want to do this. And all of a sudden it was like, hey, can we do this? And it was for the North Schalfer property. And they said, no, you can't do this. And so they, they threw the sale away. We have helped over five thousand people in the city of Dunwoody. And I don't think anybody knows that we exist. They know that Peachtree exists. They know that Talbot exists because they're owned by a huge conglomerate. I, UHS Health Group, they're not here. Because they don't care about your residents. I've been at every meeting about this ordinance because I care about this community. I live in this community. My children live in this community. I hope that my grandchildren live in this community. And there's two programs, they're still missing in the city. And if we have the distance requirements, my fear is that the community will band together and say, you can't be here. One of the, one of the aspects of what we can't treat right now is children. We had an overdose death of a high school girl in Dunwoody High less than a week ago. Because people are not educated on what that looks like. Because people are not educated on what that looks like. And we don't have any adolescent programs in the city of Dunwoody. So any child under the age of eighteen needs to go somewhere else. And as you saw on the map, it's nearly impossible to find a property that is outside seventy-five. Under square foot radius. If I could find it, I would buy it tomorrow and open an adolescent program. But I can't because we've been waiting eighteen months to open the two programs that we currently own. One that could be kids, one that could be special needs. The Phoenix is designed to not be the small community residence, but to be a large one. Where multiple people up to fifty would be able to live there, put their lives together on a long-term basis. This is not to make money. Building costs three and a half million dollars. I will make zero dollars off of that building. I make zero dollars off the building next door, the Crown. I do it because I want to help this community and the state of Georgia. And I hope. That standing up here and talking to you guys today just allows the opportunity for you to look at the distance and decide that. Maybe it's not right. Maybe that we do need access to parks. Maybe we do need access to educational centers. If there's, if we're within a thousand square feet of a school. And somebody wants to come over and bring their child to the adolescent program, they might actually know that we're there compared to like. Tucking us away in the corner, you know, behind the power plant. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else speaking in opposition? All right, seeing none, we'll conclude and we'll move on to the question and discussion uh, portion of those proceedings. Uh, like to go ahead and, and start to my far left with Commissioner Gordon. Are there any questions you'd like to ask? And we're going to make our way across the line.
Yes, to the gentleman who just spoke, um. Are there any opportunities to have an educational aspect to your facilities? Or like the high schools and the middle school?
Yes, we are actually opening one outside of the area in Talapusa. It'll have an educational component. It's on the border of uh, Alabama and Georgia, Talusa County. Um, because they want us there and we are servicing, you know, thirteen to seventeen year olds to be able to go into side schools. Educate the, the teachers and, and everybody about it and also treat that local population. There's a heavy amount of. Substance abuse and mental health issues going in our areas today. And uh. If we had more programs and people had more access, they wouldn't have to go to evil overlap up in Delonica. Or, you know, some of these small places that are two, three hours away where families can't participate in treatment. Families can't get the education, teachers can't come by and, and educate their students or, or figure out what's going on. We're, we're an open door kind of facility and we do what we can to help the community. Um, we've been in this building training the police force on responding to overdoses, you know, we, you know. We do what we can and we would love to be able to do more, but with the ordinances where they're written, it would be difficult. And I don't mind difficult, you know, it's what we kind of do, you know, um. Uh, our population is difficult uh, to deal with. But also, you know, it would be, it would be difficult to change the hearts and minds of a community that says, hey, you know, not in my backyard, you know. Um, and if, if I could speak to those people, we are, we're opening a program in uh, St. Mary's, Georgia. You know, we're, we're, I'm from Georgia, you know. And uh, you know, we're just trying to open these in places that need our services. And for what services are actually needed in the community compared to just like, hey, you know, that looks like a nice neighborhood. Let's screw it up.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Cameron?
Um, Paul, I just have, what is the genesis of the buffer requirements?
Um, the buffer requirements are to uh, space the communities out. So that not, they're not multiple communities in a neighborhood without going to the community first. So it is a tool to require um, a, a give and take progress. Process like the, the special land use permit process.
And the existing facilities are not all residential, are they?
These are, uh, the, these are the, the residential facilities. So there's like a couple of different forms, you know, from acute to hospital to um. You know, you're just like um, two facilities that are um. Not having residents, you know, that are just outpatient, but these are just the residential facilities. Outpatient services are not included. As part of any of these.
Right, okay. Um, and all of the existing facilities that you've identified on the maps are residential?
Yeah, to my knowledge, yes, yeah.
Okay. And. Did, did you all consider the fact that looking at the map that has the concentric circles? That there basically is nothing?
Yes, we, we have.
In the city?
And it is, and I'd want, not want to speak for the, for the council before they have the opportunity to, to speak themselves. But it's not my understanding that the intent behind this is through the back door to not allow any additional facilities. Then we would have done it as, and not allowed under certain circumstances. This specifically lays out if, let's say, a facility ceases to exist, which happens, right? Businesses like stop existing and then there's a, a space in a different neighborhood. They could come in with, without needing a special end use permit because of the buffer requirement. But we're saying that if there is a facility in proximity. Then we want the applicants to talk to the community first and have something that they have to submit for review. Through Planning Commission and the City Council.
All right, I don't have any other questions. I also want to point out that a mile is fifty, five thousand two hundred eighty feet.
Commissioner Shin?
Paul, questions? Can you pull up the map that Commissioner Cameron was talking about? With the buffer? Or actually, can you do the one with the Parkland as well, Parks and Schools? So. Yeah, the seventy-five hundred feet, that's a mile and a half distancing from each other. And there's really only that northern sliver of Dunwoody that's left that would possibly not go through a special land use permit. A lot of that is zone residential. So depending on the facility type, that would automatically, in the proposed condition. Trigger the slump process. Everything within that gray buffer zone automatically would trigger a slump. And so you're really only left with that somewhere in the Jetsbury Commercial District as. An opportunity for a parcel that would still have to go through us. No, it would be permitted use in that case, in both cases. Um, so to Commissioner Cameron's point, it does very, very much limit future um, opportunities. And um, not to say that the. Slup process is an automatic no from the community or from the elected officials, but it does add a lot um, to the process. Um, can we get a refresher on what the existing code for those um. Family commute, the, what we saw before that's kind of being grouped into this?
Personal care home?
Yeah, what was like the difference for that?
The personal care home were an automa- automatic slump as well. So they were independent of size. They required a slump in single family districts as well. And then they were allowed in, in, in less districts than they would be allowed under these regulations.
And they did not have any distancing requirement?
They did not, no.
Um, one of the newer conditions that's part of this uh. Agenda item is also the submitting a plan to the city. What, what will the city do to like review that or approve that or how does that work?
Um, there, I think the, the fear that we heard was that because these treatments can be expensive, like they can be very expensive. So we want to require the operator to have something in place, you know, like a, a list of resources. That they can connect people if they have to, and things don't always go as planned, you know, people, uh, not everybody. Graduate successfully out of these places. Um, but we want there to be resources available. That can connect them to other facilities that may be able to take care of them.
Okay. And then was also one of the new conditions that was brought today. The change in the number of residents from seven to five for the community residences. What was the like decision behind that?
That um. The number of unrelated people in single family homes is limited to four. So it's four, this allows for five plus caregivers, you know, it's typically someone on staff that is. That is present at those facilities as well. And then at seven plus caregivers, that, that was seen as that. Is something that is a fundamental change compared to uh, the regular um. Population limits and that that should require a special end use permit because of the impacts.
Okay. And then for recovery communities, there is no cap for residents. But what are some like things that would guide in their development determining that number?
It's like, uh, any of those, like if, if it's a um, commercial district that has like a two-story maximum. For instance, so there's height requirements in all districts. So depending on, on where you go, you would still have to meet the underlying zoning requirements. Um, you would need to uh, obtain sewer capacity from Dcap County, like I, I, items like that.
Um, and then you also mentioned that. Um, like recovery communities. And community residents couldn't just take over like one apartment building or one floor. Um, and that applies to any multifamily type housing, like condos or townhomes or really. They would have to take over the entire parcel, like if an apartment was to sell.
Yeah.
Their entire community, that community could then go through this process.
That, that's correct. It all would have to be uh, pass it out in some way, shape or form where it would have to be broken up. But it's like if you have, you know, a typical sort of suburban type garden apartment complex with twenty buildings. Um, that can't just be uh, where one building is taken out and is now the recovery community.
You have all my questions. Thanks, Paul.
Mr. Brown?
Okay. Um, just wanted to say a couple of things, uh, that, that I appreciate you guys trying to strike a careful balance here. Between um, you know, something that's permissible and is protective of communities. While at the same time trying to find a path for these, uh, these types of facilities uh, to exist. And I really appreciate the uh, the couple of speakers that came up. You had some really good points. Um, I, I feel that given what you're saying about. That for, beyond for unrelated people in a, in a home. Anyway, it, it, that's, that's all we allow. I think it's not necessarily. Too restrictive to require a uh, special permit for us to review for anything five and above for this type of use. I think that safeguards us and allows us a chance to look at what the potential impacts would be. Um. I, I do have a few thoughts and questions about the distance requirements though, um. I understand the gist of why we have the seventy-five hundred requirement. Um, I think the question earlier about the genesis, I guess. One, what, how did we come up with that specific number? I know what the purpose of the buffer is, but like, why? Why did we settle on seventy-five hundred? Was that based on peer reviews or uh? Because it's a mile and a half approximately?
So um, we, we looked at the larger neighborhoods in the city. And they are typically all covered within that seventy-five hundred um, foot radius. So. Uh, what this does is that even the largest neighborhoods will generally support one facility by rights. But not a second. That's what the seven uh, what the seventy-five hundred foot requirement does. The, we had initially, like if you remember last time or six months ago, we had a one thousand and two thousand foot requirement. Which was based on, I think, one facility every eleven, every eleven typical Dunwoody lots. And that uh, was brought to us that that was not uh, something that, that could be passed. That that was sort of something that was uh, too uh, too, too liberal.
If, Paul, if a, if one of these um, community residences is going to have to get a. Special land use permit anyway, and then we have the potential alleviation of that seventy-five hundred foot requirement. Could also be done through a special land use permit. Is that? Is that all in the same special land use permit or would we have different ones, you know, one for the actual community itself? And another for the um, for the distance requirement alleviation?
We wrote it up in a way, kind of if you uh, look into the proposed ordinance. We have brought up specific criteria for each one of those circumstances. If you're in uh, proximity to a park, there's specific uh, specific considerations for that. If you are uh, in a district that requires a special land use permit, there are specific considerations for that. That's why it's not intended to be a punitive. It's supposed to. Facilitate sort of discussion and negotiation. Um. What would happen if someone, let's say someone is within uh, proximity to a park and also within proximity to another facility? Then they would apply one application for special land use permit and both criteria, both sets of criteria would apply. So it's a, a mix and match in a sense, but it would be one application that's in front of you all one time and then for the city council one time.
I just, I, I guess I kind of wonder if, if we're almost always likely to go through a special land use permit anyway. Um, and I, you know, I, I don't like standardized numbers as much as just kind of. Uh, general consideration and trying to prevent clustering and just wondering if we need the seventy-five hundred. To begin with and that we could just through that special land use permit process, gauge whether or not. We're approaching a situation where we're having too much clustering of these types of facilities in a single neighborhood. Just seems like it might be a little less. Rigid and we'd kind of have a sense from the community and from past permits and from past performances of, you know. These facilities maybe being good neighbors or if there's a few bad apples perhaps, but. You know, what, we would have the necessary information to decide whether it's too close to another facility or not. Rather than having the rigid seventy-five hundred. Just want to throw that thought out there. Um, also, I think the gentleman made a really good point about the um, the parks. I think I understand we wouldn't want it close to schools and obviously there wouldn't necessarily be a need for. People in recovery to need to access a school, but I do think it would be beneficial um, for people to have. Proximity to, to parks. So I guess, could you just speak to where the, uh? I guess the thought behind needing to have separation between a park and these types of communities.
And, and, and both are sort of, I think, valid discussions point for, for a planning commission. Because you're a recommending body for, for the city council. So I think both are very worthwhile policy considerations. Um, the parks we put in because that's what we've heard as one of the items of uh, con- As one of the items of uh concerns that are from the community, so we put this in. As a way to proactively address those concerns, you know, we have we heard. Um, the the fears that if you know that these are halfway homes, so we proactively address this. We heard the fear for regarding schools and and parks, so we proactively address this, um, that that's where that came from.
Okay. Um, I don't have any other questions, but I just, I would like to say for consideration of the other commissioners. I I would let, I would personally like to preserve the SPU, the sorry, the the slump requirements. But I would like us to consider alleviating the seventy-five hundred buffer requirement and. The one thousand feet from parks, preserve the school part, but alleviate the one for parks so that they would have the benefit of park access. And I'm happy for council if they disagree to um state why they disagree and defend that. Or send it back to us, um, anyway, that's my personal take.
All right, thank you, Paul, a couple of questions for you, please. I I want to make sure that I understand, and I'm I'm going to speak strictly in the context of a. Single family residential areas at this point. From what I understand, there there are five, basically five gates that a facility has to pass through in order to. To exist, it's got the the buffer requirements of the existing facilities, the buffer requirements for schools or parks. Uh, they need the operating plan, as you mentioned, uh, they need to meet the residential requirement of five residents. Uh, a- and. And any of those criteria, so I think I just listed four, so maybe it's not. Oh, and and they have to be in a residential area in order to trigger this, a- all of those. Would trigger the need for a slump, correct?
And in in single family districts, any. Uh, any facility wouldn't wouldn't require a slump, so any community residence. In single family residential districts has a auto automatic slump, it's in the use table as a special use. So it would always require a special land use permit.
So a slump is triggered by its very presence.
Yeah.
Within a residential neighborhood, okay. I also want to understand that we are here and this is being rewritten. Because we're exposed right now, I mean, we're under moratorium, but we have potential exposure here because we do not have a pathway for which these. Uh, businesses to potentially follow, to to operate legally in the city, correct? And so in so doing, we've we've basically trimmed everything down to kind of two blocks. Of uh two classes of uh of operation, and that that's that's what we're doing here, is trying to make sure that we have a pathway.
Correct, yeah, that's, we we think there needs to be a pathway, and this formalizes the pathway.
So on the subject of the the seventy-five hundred feet. Is there significance or in your experience, have you seen significance to the fact that having something that's that's. Fixed as opposed to arbitrary. Uh, gives additional protection or additional certainty, or you know, less exposure to lawsuits? Uh, is that, is that a fair?
I I I would say so, yes, 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 sir.
Okay. Okay. I guess what I would say, and I'm I'm going to kind of take take the opportunity to make a comment, I I don't know that there's any magic to seventy-five hundred. But I definitely see benefit to having something sitting there, and I agree with your remarks about the parks. Um, you know, I I think that that is something that could could be talked about. Uh, what I I'm not comfortable characterizing in any method or measure is that the the slump is a. Is a punishment or a barrier to progress, um. We've had folks that that have feelings about our agenda. Appear here for a public hearing to share what they that they feel. And I will say on the subject of making this an administrative permit or or sailing past this body. Uh, I I I'm against that and I and I I'm. Believe that most of what we are here to do is to make sure that we put eyes on plans that are nonconforming. And and I I like what we do and I'm glad that we do it, but I don't want to, I don't want us to. Let these sail by us, I think that's, I think that's a dangerous precedent. And so with that, I'll I'll conclude my remarks there, and and this is. This is kind of the point where we we, you know, open it up for discussion and perhaps a motion, so. What's your pleasure? Sure, you bet.
Paul, is there? The state law, you mentioned the state law changed this year. Um, are eh any of the changes that we've kind of been mulling over? Will those bring this law in violation of state law in any way?
No, what what happened, the state law required. Required the mandatory waiting period for these types of facilities, I think nationwide. It was an AJC article that has been enforced by some communities, not others. Um, the city could always be stricter than state law, it cannot be less protective than state law, so state law struck it entirely. So at this point, we are free to either keep it or strike it as well.
Okay, um, you mentioned community concerns about having. These recovery facilities close to parks, what what are the concerns?
And, um. So we we didn't have a formal public hearing in front of the city council as of this point yet. We've had some background conversations because we have to, we have to provide something that has the potential of passing. I think the city council members here in their role as members of the community. In a way that people did not necessarily step up to the microphone here, but. City council members are hearing it in their day to day activities. Um, so we don't have anything specific to point to you, um, otherwise we would have shared it with you, like any any formal comment that we have, but. It is something that is that is present, yeah.
Do you think it's a problem to separate schools and parks from that thousand foot buffer requirement?
No, um, no, both of them could be included, one of the two could be included or both could be struck.
And then my final question, and I think um because we haven't had a process in the past. There haven't been applications, correct?
So we did not accept, I think it's sort of to the extent that Mister Merker has um has mentioned parcels. We had the moratorium in place, we didn't accept any applications at this point. We of course have existing facilities that have been permitted previously, then not all of them are drug related, um. There's mental health facilities that are included as part of this, um. They've been approved in in different ways before, um, partially as. As a personal care home, partially as a medical facility and it just like different avenues. Uh, but when we encountered the um the request at the time that prompted this more or less, um. Which was not Mister Merker's project, was a different project, um, we found that we do not have the authority based on the code right now. To permit drug related users.
Thank you.
All right, anybody have a a motion that they want to, they want to present for uh for discussion?
Could we just kind of take a temperature on? What, you know, before we start forming motions, just any? Any thoughts about like what what we've talked about, just so we don't. Get to where we're stumbling with uh motions that pass or don't pass or need to be edited?
Yeah, I I I think I think that's reasonable, we want to be careful that it's not an actual motion or vote itself, but.
Right.
But sharing what we think, yeah, you bet.
Yeah.
So, I mean, where's your head on this, and I guess we can go down the line.
Well, I think just going back to what I said earlier, I think. We're, I think staff has done a really good job of finding that balance and. We've got to have something that we think the council will pass, or else we're going to end up with another moratorium again. But we've also got to make sure that we're not allowing things to sail through, as you mentioned earlier, and so my. Again, my thought process, but wanted to take the temperature of others is, um. I like having the the slump in there for single family so that we can consider the. The potential impacts to neighboring communities and adjacent properties. I feel like we could gauge the whether there there's clustering or not. Without the rigid buffer requirements, but that's something I'm not sure everybody would agree with. And as we've mentioned before, I think um removing the. The buffer around parks is something that I would heavily support.
How how do you feel, having heard that, if you were, if you were to change or add to any of that, how do you feel, Commissioner?
I mean, I agree, I definitely see like parks as an amenities to the residents that would be in these facilities. And yeah, you actually made me think about the buffer. And the clustering really applies to the single family housing, and so, I mean, it applies to all of it, but. If it's always going to trigger special land use, then that map will be updated and it will be able to be seen at at if. And when those get approved within that district. It wouldn't necessarily address clustering in. The commercial or multifamily residential or anything like that, um. So if you strike it altogether, then that could happen, but it, yeah, it kind of just depends on what we think.
Yeah, and and I'll say for my part about that, I mean, I I think we're we're of the same mind on several issues, I I your your. Suggestion about the parks, I agree with. Uh, I I am in favor of a buffer, I'm not married to the number of the buffer, but I think having. Having some certainty, having that baked in so that we know what bridge needs to be crossed or what needs to be proven. I I think is worth having in there, especially in the interest of. Having predictability in our residential areas, but with that said, I think I think the parks, absolutely, I think the seventy-five hundred feet. I I'm fluid on that, but I think we've got, I think we've got a core of something that we could work with, at least that's that's where my head is. Mister Cameron, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, I um wonder about the distance from the parks, schools, I agree, we want. Have a little bit of a buffer, I also wonder about the seventy-five hundred in the residential. Um, districts, like why? Why does it need to be that much, that's a mile and a half, almost a mile and a half? Um, also, the special land use permit process. Um, as I sit here, I've never gone through it from the other side, but. It just involves filing the permit with the city, coming through the planning commission, and then approval by the city council, so. The time period, what's a typical time period, Paul, for a special land use permit?
It's typically from beginning to end, from like the mandatory community meeting at the beginning. Planning commission, two city council meetings, it's typically approximately six months.
And it's only required in the single family residential and then Dunwoody Village areas. Um, so I think that I, the distances, the buffer distances, I don't know, seem a little bit arbitrary, but. I'm not, again, I'm not wedded to that. I mean, I guess my concern is, I would just want to make sure that we're in compliance with any state regulations, Paul says we are. Um, and I also agree with the comment that. We want to have facilities in our city available to our residents and, um. And I think that's important as well.
Mister Gordon, what what do you think about what you've heard? You have additions or modifications that make it more valuable or less to you?
I agree with most of what I've heard, um, my fellow commissioners. Yeah, I think the seventy-five hundred feet sounds excessive. So I would like to see that lessened. And. I really don't see. How much of a difference changing seven to five residents will make. In the um, single resident, I mean. Home, you know? What I'm saying. It's like, we could keep it at seven, I think. Those are my main points.
Okay. All right, so I I think we know. I think we know, kind of have a sense of what we all, what we all might agree on, should a vote come to pass, and what we all might have a little bit of friction point on. Uh, with all that said, is there somebody that wants to try and create a motion that best fits that they believe, uh, might, uh. Might pass this set of commissioners here?
Can I make one comment, and then I can, I'll try to form a motion, but what about? We already have the thousand feet around schools, what if we just establish the minimum spacing requirement between? The community resi- community facilities of a thousand feet also, so we have one consistent number.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make sort of one suggestion for. Uh, eventually forming the motion, because most of these numbers are in the ordinance several times.
Yes.
For instance, like the requirement for. Um, for the the distance requirement from parks. Is included in both the section for the recovery communities and the community residences. I would not try to go through every single item now, what I would suggest with the motion. Is to explain if this is for both types of users, if this. If you all want to strike the distance requirement from parks, for instance, for both users. Or replace all instances for both users with a different number. That's sort of how I would go about it, and then what we'll do after the meeting, we'll go through it. And we'll find each of those those sections, because there's the risk if we go too specific now that we miss. That we miss some ordinance.
Okay, so fo- form the mo- what I'm hearing you say, I'm repeating it back just to make sure I understand. Is that if we're looking at adjusting these numbers, the one thousand and the seventy-five hundred. Then in forming the motion, we form the motion to suggest that, uh. Replacing all instances of seventy-five hundred feet for one or both uses.
Yep.
With whatever number. That you'd like to see it that way, and that would be most usable to staff, is that?
Correct, that that makes it relatively, that makes it clear what it is that y'all are intending. But it doesn't get us into detail where we have to strike out every single item.
Okay, okay.
Oh, sorry, I have one more question, the, to bring this up again, the distancing requirement that this is the first time that is being. Proposed as a condition, but when you did like a kind of temperature check with the elected officials. They were at one thousand, two thousand, or they had no number in mind?
So we had one thousand and two thousand last time, and that was not even taken up by the city council.
Okay. The one thousand, two thousand, two thousand was from uh facility to facility and then.
Two thousand was uh for recovery communities, distance to other facilities, one thousand was for community residences. Towards other facilities, and there was no distance requirement from parks or schools.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that said, team, what do we think, guys? Is there somebody who'd like to form a motion?
I just made some notes, so is. Our motion going to. Eliminate the buffer for parks. Keep the thousand foot buffer for schools. Reduce the buffer for the facilities from each other within the residential district. And. Change the number of unrelated individuals from five to seven, is that what we're thinking, or?
I will, I will tell you on that later.
Seventy-five hundred.
And we can do, we can do a separate motions as well, if it if it helps with sort of keeping things straight, and it's easier to. To differentiate it sort of into the individual aspects, you guys can do several, se- se- se-. Separate motions uh as well, and 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 write it through that way.
Okay. Um, yeah, so what I heard you identify were, I think, four different issues. One was the the parks buffer, one was the buffer from schools, one was the uh coexisting facility buffer. And then the reduction or or increase from five to seven folks. And we didn't really talk about that as a group, because I believe the first time when we were during our discussion, Commissioner Gordon was who first brought it up. I I will say for my part, I'm gonna, I'm I'm gonna struggle to not let that be a trigger, and. Now, I I live near one of these right now, and just the, just the extra cars right now, uh, is enough to, it's enough to talk about. It's worth talking about, and if we go to seven cars, I'd like to be able to talk about it, even if it's fine. I think it's worth talking about and having a voice, uh, that's my two cents though, again, I'm, I'm not the end all be all, but that's my, my point on that. So um, w- we can do. Four motions, that might be the easiest thing to kind of get some easy consensus on, because I think we all feel pretty strongly about a few of these and then. Let's see where the others land, what, what do you, what do y'all think?
Mr. Gordon, could, could you please press the button on your microphone?
So I was asking um what the buffer was to the schools, cuz I was making sure I wasn't getting confused um. So we're thinking, we'll keep that at a thousand, right?
That's been talked about, I mean, we could see what, what, what motion there, so. Somebody wants to form a motion on that issue, let's go ahead and, let's do some work.
Is approving the ordinance one separate motion and then we do the.
So I would do the individual aspects first, um, so. With some, with these changes that were previously.
And the seventy-five hundred is not just limited to residential zoning. It's just spacing between regardless of the zoning district.
Alright, so, can we get a, uh, can we get a motion, please?
Okay, I, I would like to make a motion uh to modify the proposed ordinance. For community residences and recovery communities. Um, to remove the buffer requirements for both from. Uh, from parks. So wherever we have a buffer requirement of a thousand feet around parks for community residences and communities. Um, I would like to make that zero.
I'm gonna repeat that back to you just to make sure I've got it right and then we'll look for a second. I believe I heard you say Commissioner Brown has made a motion uh for both uh. Recovery facilities as well as uh uh. Community residences to remove the buffer requirements from parks. Did I state that correct?
Yes.
Alright, that's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Shin seconded that, we've got a motion and a second at this time. Uh, at this time, is there any discussion or debate about that specific narrow issue? Seeing none, uh, all in favor of passing that motion, please raise your hand. Uh, all opposed like sign, the motion carries unanimously, okay. So we've dealt with one issue, now we've done it, now we know how to do the rest of. Uh, alright, so with somebody, we have now dealt with the issue of. The school buffer, I've, excuse me, excuse me, uh, parks buffer. Uh, I think if we're gonna leave it the way it is, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna circle back with that big motion at the end, saying. Here's how we feel, so I think we can leave that one alone. So then we have kind of two outstanding issues, one is that seventy-five hundred feet from coexisting facilities and then the other is the. Uh, number of residents, so if somebody would care to form a motion on one of those, that'd be great.
Um, I will form a motion to amend the buffer requirement. Stated in the proposed condition in the ordinance to define community residents and recovery communities. From seventy-five hundred feet to half a mile and for that to apply to both uses.
I'm gonna repeat your motion back to you to make sure before I look for a second. I heard you suggest that for both community residents and recovery communities, you are moving to amend. The seventy-five hundred proposed buffer uh between existing facilities. Amend that down to, to a half mile, so half of five, yeah, oh, we'll just say half a mile, that works just fine. Thank you very, is there okay if I use two hundreds, two thousand six hundred forty, is that, so we're speaking in seventy-five hundred and, we're in feet, okay?
Since we're in the United States and not anywhere else in the world.
Ex- exactly, exactly, okay, so I've, I've heard the motion, did I repeat that motion? Moderately well without butchering, okay, so ha- having heard a motion, is there a second, please?
A second.
Okay, and we've got Commissioner Gordon with the second. At this time, is there any debate about that issue? Discussion. God, make sure you turn your mic on.
All of these limitations you can get around by going through the SLUP process.
Alright, having heard a motion, a second, is there any further debate or question? Alright, all in favor, pass the motion, raise your hands, all opposed like sign, uh, once again, that motion uh passes unanimously. Alright, at this time, we have two potential additional issues that require. Or could require our attention, one is the movement uh uh of. Potentially uh seven to five, or rather, five to seven in the proposal. And then, of course, then a final motion, which is not ripe yet until we deal with that issue. So does somebody wish to form a motion on the maximum number of residences issue?
So I have a question about that, um, so let's say somebody wanted. To have a facility where everybody couldn't have a car, then, you know, they could bring that up when they. Fill out the. Paperwork for that and bring it through the council, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's my understanding that, that the SLUP is likely to be triggered just by virtue of where it is, if we're talking about in a residential. Community, and so all of these issues, should they choose to, to vary from any of these gates. The number of people, the uh, the buffer gates, all of those would have to be discussed as part of the SLUP process and then ultimately processed to council, so. Right, exactly.
Okay.
So, uh, is there anybody who wishes to form a motion on that issue?
I really don't.
Alright, then, then I, I, I think that issue will, that issue will lie at this time, so then what I want to ask for is a. A final motion reflecting what we've talked about, and I don't know if we need a full restatement of what we talked about, but just the fact that we have. We have made some alterations and do we wish to pass this greater um, uh, you know, greater ordinance changes uh. With our changes, I think that's, that's how we need to look at it.
I move that the ordinance as presented be approved with the two modifications we discussed. Um, no buffer around parks and two thousand six hundred forty feet. From each other. Otherwise, the motion, uh, my motion is to approve the ordinance as written.
For both community residences and recovery communities?
Yes, for both community residences and recovery communities.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna repeat your motion back just to make sure I'm clear about that, Commissioner Cameron has moved. Uh, to uh approve this ordinance subject to our two modifications, which will apply both to community residents and recovery communities. Okay, having heard that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, Commissioner Brown seconds, is there any debate or discussion at this point on that specific motion? Seeing none, all in favor of passing the motion, raise your hand, all opposed like sign, and the motion passes unanimously, thank you, everybody. Alright, uh, moving forward, uh, just when it looked like we were headed to the tail end, we have training. So uh, let's go ahead and move forward with that uh at your leisure, thank you.
Alright, thanks everyone, so um, we are doing some annual training um. And we're using it as an opportunity to review rules and procedures with you all. Um, some of this information, a lot of it is probably already familiar, um, so we'll try to speed through it, but. Feel free to ask me any questions during the process, um, and then if you have any. Si- since we are trying to make this an annual thing, if you have any suggestions afterwards, anything that you would like more training on, um, don't hesitate to reach out to. Any, any staff member and we can figure out a way to, to facilitate that for you all, so I wanted to start off by talking about open records. Um, so a record uh per the Open Meetings Act is considered all documents prepared, maintained, or received by an agency. Or by a private entity on behalf of that agency. Um, where this applies to you all is that that includes city communications, sent or received via a personal. Um, email or phone, so um, if you all are sending and receiving communications with. With city staff about city issues, um, those messages could potentially be subject to an open records. Request, and so that happens whenever someone asks for records from the city, that typically comes in um, in the form of. Uh, form on our website, but sometimes folks call in requests and sometimes they come in person and um, we're required to. To answer them, um, so a question is not necessarily a request for records. Um, and so even though incidental conversation unrelated to the business of an agency does not trigger the act's requirements. Even the mere discussion of matters of public business by a quorum of a committee. Whether or not any votes are taken or decisions are made, does trigger the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. So we understand Dunwoody is a small place and you all live in the same community and you may run into each other outside of meetings and. Have conversations and that's totally fine, um, but. You know, try to keep conversation about sort of official matters that you're, that you're taking um. Votes on to this specific meeting time as it's for this purpose, um, and. Uh, cuz if there's over four people, which is a quorum, then that could potentially get a little tricky. Um, and we handle these on a case-by-case basis, but just wanted to make you all aware um of the open records requests and how it might impact. The things that you guys communicate about with us.
One other thing, uh, the case came up last night, your texts are also subject to open records.
Quick question on that, and I'm sorry, um, discovery rules and that sort of thing, uh, something, if I use my work email. Uh, I, I know I could raise my own objections to it, but are we talking about specific communications or? Are typical requests more sweeping, do I have to worry about defending my email from, or should I make a dedicated city email?
So your personal account is uh counts as well, subject to open records.
Just on the specific subjects of the communications, okay, fine, thank you.
So quorum is for members of the planning commission, quorum has to be present for conducting meetings. If there's no quorum within thirty minutes of the scheduled meeting time, the meeting can be rescheduled um with the approval of commission members. Um, and if a member or members leave during a meeting and a quorum no longer exists, the meeting may not continue. Um, the chairman and vice chairman have to be elected and approved by the majority of planning commission members. Um, the presiding officer of the planning commission is the chairman and then the vice chairman fulfills the duties of the chairman if the chairman is absent. Um, as we saw, I believe at our last meeting, if the chairman and vice chairman are both absent, then. And a quorum is present, then the remaining commission members um elect one of the other commission members to serve as presiding officer of that meeting, and I think. Again, I think that's what happened when Scott was um the presiding officer a few months back, so you all are pretty familiar with, with how that goes. Um, the chairman and vice chairman shall serve a term of two years. And until a successor is elected and qualified, I know that that may be new info, that was sort of new information for us as well. Um, so we can sort of talk more about that when our elections come up later this year. So meetings uh need to be held in accordance with a regular schedule and in the mayor and city council meeting room. So as you all know, typically, we meet the second Tuesday of every month, but sometimes when there are um holidays or anything else, we move. Those meetings around and typically to a week later or something like that, I don't know, I don't think that affects you all this year. Um, but we do the scheduling of all the meetings at the end of the year and have it approved by council. So you should know in it far in advance if a meeting is ever not on the second Tuesday of the month. Um, a notice containing the date, time, and location um shall be posted and maintained in a conspicuous place available to the general public at the regular meeting place. So um, if you've ever noticed, outside the door, we have like a little bulletin area with a glass cabinet and we put in a copy of the agenda. Um, a week in advance so that the general public can see that this meeting is taking place here as well. So the agenda will be made available to you all at least seven days before every planning commission meeting. Um, and it's made available to the public upon request and as far in advance as possible, um, but at least twenty-four hours prior to the start of the meeting. We publish the agendas on our, on um, on base, which is the link that I send you all. And then um, we have a link to that on our website, so the public can typically access the agenda. At the same time that, that you all do, if they, if they choose to do so, so we're sort of exceeding the state's requirements in terms of that. Um, the order of the agenda can be changed during a meeting by a majority vote of the planning commission, you guys saw this earlier when you voted to. Move this later in the meeting in order to uh better accommodate the folks who had come to give public comment with the previous presentation. Um, a new item other than a zoning decision can be added to the agenda at the meeting. By a majority vote of the planning commission if it becomes necessary to address that item. And you all can also remove an existing item from the agenda again by majority vote. Passage of a motion requires the vote of at least four commission members. Um, and needs to receive the affirmative vote of a majority of those voting at which a quorum is present. Um, once the motion is on the floor, it must be voted on, what you all did earlier was a really excellent example of how to handle this by having discussions. You know, in advance of making motions so that we don't end up with a ton of motions on the floor that all have to be voted on. Um, again, the way you guys handled that was really helpful for us to be able to keep track of, um, it just makes for an easier flow. Of the meeting, um, and the affirmative question, sorry, no, you're good.
So if there's like five of us like there is today, we would still have needed four yes votes and not just three to two?
Hang on, I'm trying to do, no.
Yeah, it is, so four people need to be present to vote and then it's majority of the people present, so four people would need a three to one vote. Five people would need a three to two vote and.
Okay, thanks.
I, I think the wording on that is something we're probably wanna change, to Commissioner Shin's point. It says she'll require the vote of at least, okay, required, oh, but for, for voting members. But a fir- I, I think that wording, yeah, okay.
We, we can reword that for the next training, um, so. No commission member shall abstain from voting except in the case of a conflict of interest or if absent when a motion being voted upon. Was made, so um, the way that this sometimes comes up is that sometimes people who weren't at a previous meeting don't wanna vote on the. Me, on the minutes from that meeting, but that is something where you do need to vote on the minutes from that meeting, but for example, earlier. Um, when Debbie walked in as you all were voting, it was appropriate that she did not vote. On the adoption of the minutes because she wasn't there when the motion to adopt the minutes was made. Um, and if that's unclear, I can try to explain it a bit further. Um, and then a conflict of interest, sometimes people think that that means that you have sort of a. You know, you might have, have a friendship with an applicant or something like that, but we define conflict of interest in a really narrow, specific way, and so we define it. As um, a personal financial interest, so that's the only case in which you can abstain from a vote, uh, unless you were absent when. The motion to vote was made, um, and if a conflict of interest does exist, the commission member should provide a specific example of the conflict. Or explanation, excuse me, of the conflict of interest and staff can make a note of that. Um, and the way that that would be most um helpful for us to go is if that does apply to you. Please um let the chair and staff know ahead of the meeting, um, so that we're prepared for that and then you can leave the room. Um, when the, sort of when the discussion and when the motion is made to avoid any um uh image of impropriety. Yeah, Paul's made a good clarification, which is the sort of entire agenda item. So the final agenda item of the meeting will be reserved for comments from the public and individual speakers' comments during this time are limited to three minutes each. Um, all members of the public that wanna speak should submit their name and the topic of the comments to staff prior to the start of the meeting. Um, and so you saw that earlier, we have those public comment cards, um, and we're always happy to receive those and to pass them along to you all. Um, individuals will be held to the established time limits, but these limits may be waived by a majority vote of the planning commission, should you all wish to do so. Um, the planning commission can schedule public hearings for the purpose of soliciting public comment on any subject of interest, those can happen. Um, immediately prior to, during, or following a meeting, um, and hearings require at least ten minutes per side, but again. Those limits can be waived by a majority vote of the planning commission. So staff prepares a summary of each meeting um and makes it available to the public for inspection within a reasonable time period, we typically do it within a couple of business days, so again, we're sort of exceeding? Um, the state requirements on that one. Um, we also record the minutes for each planning commission meeting. And then you all must approve the minutes before they can be considered as an official record of the planning commission. And then those minutes, um as soon as they're approved uh as official, will be open for public inspection, um and we post those on our website. And? That is all I have. Um, so happy to answer any questions, and again, happy to receive any feedback on the types of training that you all would like to see in the future.
Well, I I think that was great, and I think, I think it was ni- nice and brief, given, you know, what we've already been through. I I would? Love to regularly hear, or once a year here. About the criteria that we should be applying when making decisions on? Major matters that are likely to come before us, so for example? For for example, the uh care homes. You know, wh- what are the legal criteria that we need to look at, not just the gates, not just the buffers, that sort of thing, but? You know, kind of talking a little bit in depth about, you know, what is the character of a neighborhood mean, what are we? What are we examining, how do we best? Contemplate that in a sense that's legally defensible? But useful also to counsel, I think, I think that would be worth doing. Yeah. All right, well, thank you, appreciate your time, appreciate you doing this. Uh, at this point, I will plow through the rest of the agenda, is there any other business to contemplate?
Yes, uh, I would like to invite you all to a meeting, uh? A joint meeting with the planning commission, uh zoning board appeals? Uh development authority and city council, as well as some other groups. Uh, on August twenty-second? Eight-thirty in the morning to ten in the morning? It'll be held at? Double Eagle Steakhouse? We will not be having steak for for breakfast. Um, and we're going to participate in a discussion? For Edge City? About? Ellen Dunham Jones, who is an architect? Uh, at Georgia Tech, will be leading that discussion, so? We'd like it if you all could come. Double Eagle? Located at State Farm.
Don't.
Oh. You take?
I think it's just along. Don't, it's good, double.
Yes, double Eagle, yeah.
Thank you, and this is gonna be publicized again? Uh, at some point, or we'll all get any?
Yes, you'll get invitations.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business for us to entertain? All right, hearing none, is there any public that wants to comment? Seeing none, is there any commission comment at this time? All right?
I want to say I appreciate all the work that staff has done on this ordinance, it's been hanging around for a while. And I know you all have done a lot of research and a lot of work and? Talking to the? Stakeholders and? Um, it shows in this final product, and it was? Pretty easy for us to work through the issues? Because of all the time you put into it, so thank you.
You know, and I I agree with that, and I want to thank you for the briefing as well, they these? The idea of briefing the week before? The actual event? Really helps with the digestion of this and understanding kind of what we're gonna be hearing and? Speaking for me personally helps me kind of move through some of these issues without belaboring them, so salute, thank you. Is there any other, any other commission comment? Seeing none, we stand adjourned, thank you, everybody.